Can you hear me?
We sure can. Hi, Shelley and hello, everyone. We are gonna go ahead and get started. So thank you all so much for being here this evening. As a reminder, this is a special meeting for the Marion Village Association. So tonight's meeting will have a limit of one hour for the duration. What we will do is spend the first 15 minutes asking Shelley, our guest speaker from the open shelter to share information about the open shelter, let us know how their program is going, what kind of impact they've already had in the community and just kind of give us some updates. Shelley, we would also love to hear from you as far as, you know, ways that we as a community can help support the open shelter, donations, volunteer, whatever that might look like. And then following that, we will open the floor for the community to share questions, concerns, anything that's come up. And so we can just have kind of an open discussion. Following that, we will discuss whether or not we want to look at potentially having a good neighbor agreement, which is an agreement created in good faith typically between a business or organization and the surrounding community. Just to kind of outline some things that make both sides good neighbors, what it might look like if there are concerns from either side, who can be contacted. And the Marion Village Association would of course, help to support that effort and coordinate it. So without further ado, I'm going to give the floor over to Shelley Matthias. Shelley, please feel free to introduce yourself and the floor is yours.
Thank you. That was a lot. So the open shelter has been around for 40 years. It will be 40 years, I believe officially, the beginning of December this year. So we started off as an overnight shelter, men's shelter in Columbus and over the years as a result of location changes and funding, we've sort of morphed into what we are today. So we've been on persons for almost two years. We provide day services for homeless individuals as well as marginally housed, people who just need support. So we are open for those of you that don't know, Monday through Friday, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. for our guests. Staff is there, starting 8 a.m., maybe earlier on some days until usually 4, 4:30, just kind of depending on the day. And services we provide. So generally, we have a hot meal when we open the doors at 10. Sometimes that has hasn't happened as much lately. So we're getting a lot less food donations, which is crazy because the need for food is growing. With the cost of groceries and SNAP benefits being cut in the spring, it's, it's challenging. So when we can, we have a meal. Hopefully, you know, that's five days. We, we, this week, we have had a meal Monday, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And all are welcome. You don't have to be homeless or marginally housed. Anyone who's hungry is welcome to come in and have a meal. Generally, Solomon prepares them. We don't currently have a kitchen, so he uses roasters. And typically, the food that comes donated to us is already cooked. And so it's a matter of warming it. We do have a few churches that come in and provide the meal and like to serve and they've most of the churches have been with us for years. And so they are long time supporters and bring in good, good food and it's, it's nice. It's a nice treat for our guests. And we pass out sack lunches daily as well. So mobility is an issue sometimes for people is particularly if they're in tents. And so the ability to take a sack lunch back and, you know, to your camp and not have to go back out for a meal is helpful. We, that is all volunteers, all donations. We have for the first time, certainly since I've been around, which is about eight years. We don't have enough sack lunches. We are seeing crazy numbers of guests. At our old location, I would say we averaged about 80 people a day. More easily seeing 150 people every day. Many days, it's significantly more. So the need just seems to be growing. And so we're seeing a lot more people, a lot more families as well. And then we do other services based on your housing status. So if you are living on the land, Tuesday is a good day to come and we can help you out with things to keep you safe outside. So the reality is there aren't enough shelter beds by a long shot. In fact, I checked the numbers today and there are currently 318 men on the waiting list and 236 women on the waitlist. So there's going to be people outside, right? The shelter is, can be a really difficult place to be as well. And so for some people, they, you know, they can't go. If you are a couple and you don't have children, they will separate you. That's hard for a lot of people. The mother and son that we have been working with for a while now that we're sleeping outside our building, that was why they wouldn't go. Because he's got some substantial issues and couldn't, that wasn't something he could manage on his own. So they didn't really have much of a choice. If you have a pet, you can't take your pet. So it's just, it's tricky. It's hard. Bottom line is gonna be people sleeping outside. And so we can provide blankets and sleeping bags and candles and matches and flashlights and batteries and bug spray and sunscreen and hand warmers and foot warmers and just things that, that, that you need when you're outside on the land. If you are oh, also on Tuesdays for our friends that are on the land, they can get a clean outfit and they can get a small food bag. So typically stuff that's already prepared. So they wouldn't even, you know, wouldn't even have to be heated, certainly, you know, not cooked. So that's like cans of beef stew, cans of SpaghettiOs, things like that are super, super helpful, protein bars, sandwiches, you know, things that they can take back and eat that'll be filling. So that's Tuesday. And then our friends in our house, we do help out with clothing. It's two times a month as opposed to once a week. Just because, you know, the thought process is they have a safe place to keep their clothing and to keep it dry. They probably have a better chance of, of being able to clean their clothing. And so we feel like getting it less makes sense. We do food as well for our, our house friends for the last full week of the month. And again, we've always had an abundance of food and lately it's just been, it's been crazy. We have had to tell people we don't have food, which is hard to tell people when they really need it. So so those are the, generally the services we do for our guests. We do have a birth certificate and ID program. And so anybody that is trying to get housed or get work needs an ID and in order to get an ID, you need a birth certificate. And so my colleague Sarah, who's our director of guest services, she runs that program and my goodness, she does a lot of birth certificates and IDs. I believe year to date, she was at 275 birth certificates and 145, I think it was IDs. So that's a lot. We will also keep them so we can store your birth certificate to keep it safe and you know where it is and you can come and request it when you want it, which is pretty helpful as well. Sorry, somebody just rang my doorbell. So birth certificates and IDs, that's a big program that we do. We have a payee ship program. So individuals that receive supplemental security income or VA benefits and aren't allowed to manage their own funds, we manage for them. So their funds come to us and we pay all of their bills and we work on a budget typically together. That's our, you know, that's the ideal way. And then they come weekly and pick up their funds and we can kind of check in and see how they're doing. Which is nice. So none of us have a social work license. So individuals who are stable, if they're med compliant, we can actually tie their funds to their meds. Cause the objective behind, you know, getting supplemental security income is to keep you stably housed. And we've recognized that that's hard taxpayer money and we're going to spend it appropriately, right? So the patrons that we work with, if you are outside in the land, you get $50 a week. It's not negotiable. So you can't, you know, decide to live outside and, and get a check for $914 to spend monthly. That's just not how it works in our program. So I think that's all of the programs we offer. There's probably more than I'm forgetting. But we, what this location has allowed us to do that we've really not been able to do in the past is to have outside services come in. And so we have the biggest is on Tuesdays, which I'm sure many of you have seen, the Mount Carmel Street Medicine comes with their big bus. And they have a doctor, actually, I think they have a couple of doctors that come, multiple nurses. And they can do lots of things. So they can write prescriptions for individuals who are sick, they can check sugars, they can do pregnancy tests, they can do small procedures on the bus. Wound care is something that they do a fair amount of. Just this week, they started offering flu shots. They can do COVID testing. So that, that they're fantastic. They offer a lot. And if they can't do it, they can get you connected with a doctor's appointment and help with transportation, which is a big, big thing as well. So they have, since they started with us, they have, they're doing a banner business and they've actually added nurses. So, so that's been a really good program to try to keep, you know, our friends that are outside and marginally housed, you know, as healthy as possible. We also have somebody that does SNAP benefits. We have two different people. One comes on Tuesday, one comes on Thursday. And that's huge. I, you know, it's really difficult to get anybody on the phone and job and family services. And you kind of have to commit, you know, I suppose a minimum of two hours. I've heard much, much worse. To get questions answered about SNAP. So to be able to come to our agency and speak with a person and have those kinds of things taken care of is huge. So that's fantastic. We have an individual that comes in and can help people get signed up for a free cell phone, government phone. So that's super helpful as well. We have multiple people that come from different insurance agencies that can get you signed up for Medicaid. For Medicare for those that, that it applies to, which is super helpful as well. We recently added a woman that comes in and does, it's called Soul Care and she does foot care. So, you know, people who are living on the land, keeping healthy feet is critical. And with the weather changes and the way the weather's, you know, it's getting colder now, that's becoming more and more important. So they're coming once a month, which is fantastic. We have someone from the VA that comes once a week. We have multiple days a week. We have someone come from Southeast Healthcare. They have a program called React and they're fantastic. They can get individuals into detox and treatment centers now. And so when someone says they're ready, they can act, which is great. You know, it was just a few years ago when someone would say, I'm ready. And you would call and call and call and call and try to get them in. And two hours later, they've changed their mind. So the React program is fantastic. And they also pass out Narcan as well. Can't think of anything else as far as outside services. We take donations, of course, financial donations, we take material donations, we take everything except large furniture because we don't have this space. But as individuals get housed, we help with pots and pans and dishes and silverware and bed sheets and towels and all those kinds of things you need when you're first moving into a place. So we'll take anything like that. And of course clothes, we get a lot more women's clothing donated, but we see more men than we do women. So, you know, men, if you can clean out your closets, that'd be awesome. We, of course, are very reliant on volunteers. So right now there are four full-time staff members at the open shelter and many days we feel like we're drowning. And so we are working on trying to hire somebody. Right now we could only afford part-time, but hopefully we can find somebody. You know, that's willing to do this kind of work. It's a special person that's willing to do it. So volunteers is huge. Typically a volunteer will help serve food, sort through donations. We've done a lot of sandwich making lately. As I say, we're short on lunches. But we get donations from Kroger twice a week and it's typically a fair amount of lunch meat. So we've done a lot of sandwich making lately. So it's just kind of, you know, whatever needs done that day. As far as volunteer opportunities, of course, around the holidays, there are occasions. Thanksgiving and Christmas. So Christmas will do a family shopping day, which last year I had to warn Tim, who lives behind us. And I'll have to warn him again this year because it's just a lot of loading into cars, you know, Christmas gifts and whatnot. So that'll be coming up, but we can always use lots of volunteers for those events. Have I answered? Do you think I've answered all of the things you suggested I talk about?
That was, that was impressive, Shelley. That was such a lot of information and I, the list of programs that you offer and services is honestly incredible. I, I remember vaguely when you first came and spoke to us a couple of years ago, just before you opened, sharing with us kind of all of the different services you offered. And it, it sounds to me like that list has certainly grown. So incredible. I did go ahead and post the link to your website with the needs list in chat. It seemed like that was a good place to have like everything kind of condensed. So folks who are interested, that is in chat, if you'd like to check that out. Other than the, the, the food shortages, which does sound like a pretty significant challenge that you're facing. Are there any other major challenges that, that the shelter is facing right now? Staffing, obviously huge. I know it sounds like volunteers would be huge. Anything else that, that kind of is just a major challenge in front of you right now?
Yeah. So, you know, given the economy, our financial donations are down, no question. Which makes it, you know, interesting to do the job. And we pinch pennies and, and, you know, as best we can. But there are, for example, we have a shower at the open shelter and, and there are so few places someone can get a shower. We would love to open up the shower. But again, we've got to figure out if we can afford the cost of of doing that. We did it on kind of a trial basis at the beginning of the year and it just was a little bit overwhelming. The volume of towels created that had to be washed every day. We had people coming in to take a shower that we didn't know, had no relationship with. So typically we see a lot of the same people. And when you, when you've grown to know their name and they know you and they trust you and they come in and they're having a bad day and you, you kind of try to de-escalate, they trust you and they understand that. When you have someone coming in that doesn't know you at all, it, it's you know, much more difficult. And so we did have a couple of issues with people who, you know, we couldn't de-escalate. So those are all things that we're trying to work through, but you know, raising funds to open that shower backup would be, you know, a service that's greatly needed. We actually had a church, fantastic church reach out to us a couple of weeks ago and they asked if we would be interested in a washer and dryer, which we don't have insulation or fittings for those, but they, which I shared with them, but they contacted me and they've got a plumber that's going to volunteer his time and an electrician. So hopefully we're getting a washer and dryer. So that would certainly help with the shower situation, but we just keep, you know, trudging along and figuring it out.
Oh, no effect, right? Like you can open the showers, but then you need things for the showers and towels and things to wash the towels. So yes. So hopeful that that works out. And then I'm, I'm sure you'll add those items to your wishlist as well for, for things like laundry detergent. So, okay. So Shelley has shared tons of information. Folks that are here, do you have questions for Shelley? Do you have anything you'd like to discuss? Anything more you'd like to know about the open shelter or the services they offer? I know some folks had had some concerns and I think Shelley, you've even worked with those folks directly to help address those concerns because again, you, you've, you've shared them in, in many ways. So you can feel free to raise your hand, folks. If you're not able to do that, just feel free to unmute yourself and jump in. This is going to be an open floor. So we asked that no one talk over each other, just to make sure that everyone can be heard. But I'd like to hear from folks what you'd like to share or anything you'd like to ask. Does look like there is a question in chat. Is there a specific process, Shelley, for volunteering?
So we try to make it as easy as possible because we need volunteers. So the easiest thing to do is to call the shelter and talk to Solomon. He's our deputy director of day services and he manages volunteers. If you're just interested in kind of a day-to-day kind of thing, you know, chances are we're going to be able to use you whenever you would like to come. If you're thinking more of like a Thanksgiving, Christmas thing, it gets a little bit trickier than because we have lots of people who are interested in volunteering around those holidays. But as I said, the easiest thing is to just give the shelter a call. And, you know, set something up with Solomon.
Perfect. And next question, are there specific times and days of the week that are most needed for volunteers?
No, I mean, every day. Every day there's work to be done. And again, it kind of depends on what you want to do. So some people like coming in and going into the donation room and just sorting. Other people love to have a little bit more interaction and, and with guests. And so if you're wanting to serve a meal, that would be a little bit more specific as far as what day you came in.
Thank you. Okay. No other questions are in chat right now. Is there anyone that would like to ask a question, share any comments? Again, feel free to use the hand raise feature or unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Jessica Klinger.
Hi, Jessica. Go ahead.
I live on Jenkins and Fifth. But some of you might know that I also have long worked in eviction prevention. So I just wanted to say I have always been very appreciative of the work that open shelter does and advocacy they, they have done in the community. So I just wanted to say that I'm very grateful for all that you guys, you guys do for folks in our community.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks for that, Jessica. And then I saw a question asking the number, Shelley, I found 614-222-2885. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Oops, that to chat now. So that is the phone number, folks. If you're interested in asking about volunteering or donating.
And I, I can just mention, so we have had people sleeping outside the shelter. Which is, you know, it's difficult. I feel, this is me personally, I feel morally obligated to tell them where they can go if I'm going to tell them they can't be here. And I didn't know where to tell them to go. And what I was sort of, the way that I was handling it with the individuals that were sleeping outside was I was trying to connect with them as often as I could. Not all of them came into the shelter, but some of them did. And sort of find out what, you know, what was going on. And as I shared, the mother and son are in the process of getting housed. They are still not housed. It's, it, that, you know, it's a long process, takes a long time. But then I had another individual who was straight up on this with me and said, I don't want to get housed. I'm perfectly happy doing what I'm doing. And so we had to have a hard conversation about the fact that, you know, the front of the shelter is not a place where you can set up housekeeping. You know, if you need a place to sleep, I understand, but you can't, you can't live out in front of the open shelter. And so, you know, we were having those conversations and then we had somebody shoot a pellet gun and break several windows. And it happened twice. It happened on the first time on a Wednesday and then two days later it happened again and they shot additional windows. And so in conversations with people that were out there, I realized it was an issue with someone that was sleeping out there. And so I just had to tell people, you know, we cannot afford to replace the glass in our windows. You know, if we, if we have to spend money on replacing the glass in our windows, something else isn't going to get done. So I told them they couldn't stay there, which was hard, but you know, it had to be done. So as far as I know, no one is sleeping out there. You know, I suppose after we leave, it's possible that someone sleeps out there, but it doesn't, there doesn't seem to be as much stuff. You know, kind of parked around out there. We for sure want to be good neighbors. You guys were here, you know, long before us and, and you want to feel safe in your homes. And of course I totally agree with that. I want to feel safe in my home. And so we do, you know, the best we can with that. And I meet with other service providers on Person's Avenue and we talk about a lot of these same issues and how they're handling it. Obviously, one of the biggest frustrations is the waitlist with the shelter, with the shelters and it puts us in kind of a difficult position because we don't have a place to send them. So I will share that I was in a meeting a few weeks ago and there's, you can actually call 311. And it's a department of the city and you can let them know that there are people sleeping outside. It seems, and I suspect there are people on this call who have had the same experience, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. If you call enough, the city's going to react. And so, you know, that's maybe not a bad option. Obviously, the, the ultimate hope is that that individual, you know, gets help. But I think, you know, if you can call 311 enough to let them know that there are people sleeping in a particular place outside, I think, you know, hopefully good things happen with that. So there, so there's that. And then we try really hard too with the, with the garbage. And we have community service workers that come in occasionally. And so we'll typically have them do a lap around. We just kind of have them do the block. And I know the car dealership to the north of us, they have asked as well. So we try to hit them as well. And then we had a lovely church group come in and asked to organize litter pickups once a month. And I said, yes, please. And so they're doing those once a month. It's the second Monday of the month from nine to 11. And she brings all the supplies. So that's gone really, really well. But I do, I do want to be a good neighbor. So I, you know, if somebody is upset or confused or concerned or needs something addressed, don't hesitate to email me at the shelter. Which if you go to our website, there's a link there that you can send an email. You, you can always call me. You know, at the shelter and, you know, I, I, if I can help, I want to help for sure.
Two questions. We have one in chat and then one off follow-up from the meeting that we had a couple of months ago. When some neighbors kind of came to us with questions about can we have a conversation with the open shelter? See what kind of things we can do to, to kind of work together. I believe the other item was trashed that you mentioned. Do you have a private dumpster for the shelter or do you have to use the, the regular city dumpster that's provided for the residential as well?
So we pay, we pay, it's $85 a month. And it, you know, it's a garbage dumpster. What can I say? It, you know, sometimes it doesn't smell good. And I've, you know, had conversations with Tim who lives directly behind us and he actually found something on Amazon to sprinkle in the dumpster and asked if we wouldn't mind purchasing that and using it, which we are. You know, that's, that's a hard one, right? Cause the dumpster is, you know, 15 feet from the side of his house. So that makes it a little bit tricky, but yeah, I'm happy to work with Tim and try to, you know, keep that from being too bad. We've also locked it up like Fort Knox, trying to keep people from A, digging in it and making a mess and B, dumping stuff in it that, you know, they shouldn't be. So.
Right. Cause you're paying for that and you need all the space for it. Certainly I'm, I'm waste production is no joke.
One of the first things that happened was somebody left furniture.
Oh, no.
And so I called the city and they were like, well, we can't do that. I pick up from a business. So again, Tim, I apologize. I keep throwing this name out. Um, Tim, I asked him, I said, can I arrange a furniture pickup, put it in front of your house? And he said, sure. So that's how we got rid of that. So yeah, we're trying to keep that from happening.
So I will go, so the next question's in chat. Do you provide clients with information on apartments available or employment opportunities?
So we don't do housing help. That's a full-time job for like five people. For our payees, we do, we do housing help, but for, you know, our regular guests, we, we don't. Anytime we hear of anything, obviously we share that information. Jobs, we do occasionally get emails and whatnot. We always post it. We have a board in our day room where we post jobs. We also try to keep a list of felon-friendly jobs as well. So, you know, if I've got the information, obviously I'm happy to share it, but you know, we don't get a ton of information about jobs and the housing piece is just, it's nearly impossible, especially right now. There's just so little available.
Very true. I'm not seeing any other questions right now in chat. Is there anyone else that has a question they'd like to?
Shelley, I'm Bob Lick D. My wife and I are watching here and, and thank you. My gosh, thank you for what you're doing. This is such I'm curious and I apologize because I, I missed the very, very beginning. But do you, and you talked about working with the other entities, especially around in Parsons. Do you do much with the REB, the REB Center and do you have a relationship with the neighborhood Pride Center in case there's any need for the city services or do you already know who to go to with your established relationships?
Yeah. So REB is one of the agencies. So it's four agencies, service agencies that are meeting currently. We have invited others, but right now it seems to just be the four of us. So it's STO, Community Development for All People, the Open Shelter and REB. We've met, I think, three times and we have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. And so sort of our objective in those meetings is twofold. So it's I, I imagine, and the others feel the same way, that we are seeing 75% of the same people. I, I imagine, um, and the others feel the same way, that we are seeing seventy-five percent of the same people. Uh, and so the question is, you know, if we were to pool all of this money, what is the most effective way to, um, work with, um, our guests? To help them, you know, the best that we can. So there's that. And then the second piece is, um, you know, sometimes we will have an issue with a guest or community development is having an issue with the guest. And so our ability to sit down and say, here's what's going on with this particular person. You know, have you had success working with him? Do you have suggestions? Do you want me to just send them to, you know? So again, so, you know, how can we be most effective in our help? Um, so those meetings have been fantastic. Um, you mentioned something about Pride. Um, we, um, for the first time this year, we walked in the Pride Parade and that was the first for me. Um, it was unbelievable. It was the most beautiful, supportive, loving environment I think I've ever been in. It was fantastic.
Wonderful. Wasn't the pride that I was talking about though. Uh, although that's wonderful to hear. I was talking about Catherine Call and the neighborhood, uh, uh, Pride Center down at Reeb.
Okay. So I'm with the Pride Center, Reeb, Reeb, but, uh, yes, Catherine Call and I are in, we, um, chat almost weekly. Um, we go to many, many meetings together. She's fan, she's a fantastic resource. Um, and the other one is, um, Dara Lenkay from, um,
Yes, I thrive. Yeah.
Yep. She's fantastic. Oh my goodness. Fantastic. So, yeah, I mean, in the two, almost two years we've been here, we've met a fair number of people, but I'll have to ask Ally about the Pride Center. I don't know what that is. Or maybe I do, and I just didn't know it was called the Pride Center.
Well, whatever it's worth, uh, I'm, I'm going to drop you an email and maybe we can chat about a few things.
Would love it.
Cool. Do you, do, I'm curious to, there's such a shortage and it's, it's, it's such a nightmare, but, um, do you, have you been able to like send anybody to any of the places like that, that Community Housing Network has or who, who are some of the housing folks who are?
Yeah. So the Community Housing Network has an application process and they have a huge waitlist. I, I in eight years have never gotten anybody housed from, no. Now I have, um, I'm the representative payee for people who get their housing through C H M, but they came with that to me, you know, it wasn't anything I did. Um, so the, oh, so since I've been on Parsons, the only successful housing that I have been able to do is the, there's a team called the Path Team that works for Southeast Healthcare. And they, um, have been able to get people housed. Um, so the way that their process works is you have to have a mental health component. Um, and so that you go through their process to receive mental health help and then they can help you get housed. Um, so that doesn't necessarily apply to everyone. Um, but that, that's been the only successful housing. I, I mean, I could count on one hand, the number of people we've gotten successfully housed since I've been on Parsons. Um, the other thing that's been going on that you guys have probably seen is they've been passing out section eight vouchers over the last few years. And make kind of a, you know, big thing about it. Well, there's so few places that will take section eight vouchers. Um, that just having the voucher isn't as helpful, you know, as you might think. Um, and so I've, I've actually got the name of a lady, um, on my desk right now. Um, so she got housed and that he's a horrible landlord. And so we're working with CMHA and, um, the landlord trying to get her out of that place. But yeah, it's crazy.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's, uh, that's very helpful. And again, thank you for what you're, uh, in this difficult work, certainly.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And I see a hand raised, uh, from Bob Rome.
It's, it's pronounced Ream actually.
Ream. Well, I'm very sorry about that. Bob, please go ahead.
Um, I do the calendar in the Columbus Free Press and the Marion Village Association has more events per month than any other neighborhood association I engage with. And so I appreciate all your events. That's how I learned about tonight's event. Um, I've been a friend of the open shelter for probably thirty years. I knew Kent Vidal and used to volunteer in the basement of the church where the open shelter used to be. And I have a very specific question about bus passes. I'm a transportation advocate and because I happen to be a member of the Columbus Coalition for the, for the Humblest. When they talk about eliminating paper bus passes and having everybody pay with their smartphone, what happens with places like the open shelter? Maybe hands out single individual paper bus tickets? What happens if they can't do that?
Yeah. So that, um, that came across or came to our attention, um, not long after we moved to Parsons Avenue. And there were other organizations that received bus passes as well that went to Coda and said, you know, we have a problem. So at this point they haven't made the move to do that. Um, transportation, as you well know, is huge. During, um, COVID, when the buses were free, that was huge for this population of people that we work with. It was just incredible. Um, so when they started charging again, it was scary. Um, we work and work and work to get bus passes. So I apply for grants, um, uh, smaller grants to try to get funds. Um, we buy bus passes. We buy a hundred bus passes. That gets us through maybe the first two weeks, um, maybe into the third week of the month. And we're very tight with our bus passes. So we only do them for jobs and for doctor's appointments with verification and you can only get one a week. Um, and we still, you know, we still run out. Um, you know, bus passes is a huge need. One thing too, that they have done, which I don't really understand is they went away from the paper one-day ticket where it would stamp on the back when you used it. So you knew that A, it had been used and B, when it was valid. Now it's like, uh, almost like a credit card and they don't stamp on it. So you can't tell if it's been used or not until you get on the bus and try to use it. Which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Um, you know, we used to have people come in and say, I'm not going to use my day pass anymore. Give it to somebody. We can't do that anymore because you can't tell if it's valid or not. So, yeah, transportation is, is tricky.
And so does Coda not have anything through their app that lets you scan these new bus passes to see if they're valid? There's no way to even check through Coda without being on a bus?
I'd have to ask. So I'm not a bus rider. I, I'd have to ask Solomon. He's a bus rider. Um, to my knowledge now, but, you know, like I said, I have to ask. Yeah, it's crazy.
I had imagined until this conversation that the open shelter and other places had a machine that could read those passes, those new passes or add money to them. And that evidently or clearly is not true.
No, it is not. And they, um, I, I will mention a day pass costs four dollars and fifty cents. Coda sells them to us for four, four dollars apiece. Yeah. So I, and I have talked with people from Coda and I've never gotten anywhere as far as, you know, can you discount them more? Um, you know, that, I feel like there's got to be a better way, but haven't figured it out yet.
I appreciate actually talking with somebody in the business rather than talking with the transportation people. And it's helpful to know and I'm learning.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Shelley? Okay. I'm not seeing anything in chat. All right. Well, the next step would be, um, just based on the conversations we've had, Shelley, and also, um, kind of approaching the couple of things that even had come up at our meetings, which was individuals who were kind of, as you, as you said, making camp sort of at the shelter, um, the issues with garbage. It seems like you've already made a great strides in, in trying to tackle those things on your own. So that's, that's amazing. And, um, we, we appreciate the extra effort that that takes because, you know, those are certainly not easy challenges to solve. Um, my recommendation at this point would be that a good neighbor agreement that we might look at, maybe just something very simple, just something that says, you know, um, the, the open shelter continue to operate in, in the area and, um, will maintain a kind of an open door policy. And maybe it's just a great way for us to outline how they can, how folks can contact you if there are concerns or questions. Um, maybe just something that says, you know, this is how we communicate and, and this is how we, um, make sure that everyone's aware if, if something comes up. I think just something very, very simple. Um, nothing, nothing, you know, long or drawn out, since it doesn't sound to me like there are any major issues at present, which again, I, I thank you so much for all of those efforts above and beyond the services you offer. Um, because with a staff of four, it's kind of incredible that you're able to accomplish so much with your team. It's, it really is. So, um, going sentiments of others. Thank you so much. I mean, this is, I, I was looking at the website to see just how many people you've helped in two years that you've, you know, been there. And it's, it's really very incredible. So, and thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Sure. You had a very long day and here you are sharing your time with us as well, which I really appreciate.
I, that's I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, please go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, as far as the good neighbor agreement, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with doing that. Um, I, I hope people appreciate the fact that since the day we moved in, you know, I've really tried um, to be super respectful of the neighborhood and the neighbors and do all that we can do. And I'm obviously happy to continue to do that.
Yes, I think you have been a wonderful neighbor and, um, just, you know, you've helped the, the members of our community so much. And, um, we really, we really all appreciate that, I think. Is there anyone just before we, before we adjourn, any final questions or just anything you'd like to share with Shelley, any comments? Um, before we wrap up this evening, I'm seeing some thanks pop up in chat, folks thanking you for being here, Shelley.
Thanks for inviting me.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, in that case, Shelley, I'll follow up with you, um, just with something very simple that we can put together for kind of a good neighbor agreement. Just something that shows that, you know, we do have open lines of communication. Um, and of course we would certainly love to share any information that you have. We'll, we'll post something with your needs list and, and how folks can get involved if they'd like to. Um, since it sounds like that is definitely a need that's going to continue. So thank you so much for being here. Everyone, thank you so much. This was a fantastic meeting. We really appreciate your time and hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Thanks. Take care.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.